Painters, if you will, that can paint a very beautiful picture and paint a very nice scenario. What you simply don't have is those that can put it together from A to Z. And when you lay that on the template of what America purports itself to be, highly educated, highly skilled, a nation of leadership, one of the most modern and powerful nations in the world, there's a mismatch there. And I was trying to understand it as I was working in these conflicts for the last two or three decades. How can there be such a mismatch, given our vaunted education system, our vaunted economic systems, our vaunted military power? What are we getting wrong? And either it's a case of, well, we're so rich and so powerful that if we get it wrong, it doesn't matter. We can absorb it, which could be one of the, could be the case. Or two, we can't get it together. We simply can't get it together. And I don't understand, given what I just laid out, how we cannot get it together.
Now, PJ, this is Peter. One of the things that I was thinking as I was reading portions of your address was, it sounds to me like part of it might be a classic case of leading a horse to water, but the horse just doesn't want to drink it. For instance, in trying to help, if you will, nation build in some of the Middle Eastern countries, helping to show them, you know, the benefits of democracy and that sort of thing, when they've never known democracy in their entire existence, and them saying, well, that works well for you, but it may not work well for us. Is that part of it, or am I getting that wrong?
Yeah, no, that's the water. You want to concentrate on the horse.
Right, okay, all right.
No, meaning, yes, no, that's an end state. That's an end state that should be understood prior to attempting to tackle these grandiose ideas. So, and if that's not understood, then it ties into my thesis of why are we not understanding it? And once, and if we don't understand it, you can see what's incurred, too. If we do understand it, why can't we get it right? Why can't we get to the end state we say we want? Look, if we don't want these countries to be modeled after us, you know, which we're starting to shy away from now, that's fine. But don't go in there and say, you know, in the last two decades, which we've been trying to do in Iraq and Afghanistan and in other places, Palestine, and not be able to get there. This is the disconnect that I think we have. Now, if a given place, like you said, Middle East doesn't know democracy and really can't get there, which I believe, and we should not be professing it, that should be understood going in upfront. We shouldn't profess the opposite, knowing darn well that the likelihood of that happening won't. And then expend tremendous amounts of money and lives and capital to get there. That's the greater mismatch.
So PJ, when we have to go to a break, when we come back, I want you to address the painters, the people that can put this wonderful picture out there. Because I keep coming back to, what is it over the decades that the painters are so good at doing, but to your point, are missing? And I have to believe people like you and others have sat down and had conversations with them about those issues. So when we come back, we'll have you address that question.
Also, we have all three, we have three lines open. If you'd like to jump into this conversation at some point, we'd love to have you do that. 721-1290 is our number. Talk Back continues in a moment.
Dr. Hardy of Northwest Plastic Surgery Associates reminds you that both your state of mind and immune-
Hey, we are back on Talk Back. Hi, Peter Christian, John King over there, Bob Siden Schwartz joining us. Colonel PJ Dermer is joining us this morning, all the way from just outside Arlington, Virginia, I understand. Is that right, sir?
That's right.
All right. So please continue, Bob.
Yeah, I'd ask prior to the break, for PJ to please talk about the painters. You know, he's describing a situation, and clearly, somebody isn't getting it from his perspective. So what is it about the painters? They've had to have had people like yourself and others come to them, review policy. There's all sorts of talking heads and think tanks all over the place. Somebody has to say, look, this isn't working. Why is it not getting up to the guy with the brush?
Right. What I use is, and I said painting painter in the opening, because of broad strokes, vision, beautiful picture. But the point I use, I make in the paper, and I lecture and I teach elsewhere, is about, is the concept of the builder, whether it be a house, a neighborhood, a warehouse, a physical structure. And all of us understand this. I don't know how deeply some do, but I use the point about, you know, the first place that one starts is the architect. The architect is the person that has to lay the initial picture of what you think you might want to build on paper, or on, these days, 3D CAD on a computer. But he'll get that, or she will have to get that from you. You have to have a vision of what you want. You know, you move out to Montana, you want to go out to the hills, you want to build a nice ranch, you want picture windows, you want a meditation room, you want a big workable barn structure, whatever it is, you have to be able to voice that, or to clarify, or make that clear to the architect. Because until then, until it gets down into a formal state of affairs, a formal document, it doesn't mean anything. It's just in your head over dinner. And the architect is the initial stage of putting lines on paper to see if this is what you mean, you say. You want it this far, you want it this big, you want it this color, this size. Number one. Number two, is the architect has to put it into legal code, legal structure. You just can't willy-nilly build anything you want in a lot of places around the world, let alone America. You have to, there's rules, there's codes, there's requirements. The architect tries to frame it. He's the first framer. We have lots of those in Washington, and in think tanks, and universities, that can stand up there and lay out a vision for the future, and what they see, and how many pluses and minuses we should do on the next administration. But the next level, in order to operationalize something, to make it real for your structure, you have to get a general contractor, or a builder. If not, your dream, or your vision will sit on an architectural diagram until it goes away. And the builder looks at it, and starts looking at it from the standpoint of, how would I make this happen? I heard what you said, peace in the Middle East, no crime in our time, stop global warming, whatever the case may be, the interest may be. And the builder's going to look at the architectural drawing, go, interesting, nice. Well, it might cost this to do this. What kind of materials are you envisioning? Exactly when would you like this done? You don't want to build through the winter, you'd rather build through the spring and summer. Do you know that there's a water table there? You need to drill for the, down through the mineral rights to get the water right, especially in Montana, you have to do X, Y, and Z, it's going to cost this much money. Everything has to be put in the perspective. Everything has to be put into a realistic framework. And the builder does that. The builder's the first person in the level to do that. In the national security policymaking world, in the world of national military strategy, we call the first step strategic strategy, the strategic level of warfare. Where is it ultimately that the North, excuse me, in civil war example, the North wants to go, the North wants to defeat the South, to bring the South into the Union? That's a strategic vision. Well, how are we going to do that? Well, of course, we don't know. We're going to have to figure it out as we go. But somebody has to operationalize the vision to bring the South into the North. And ultimately, as you know, we went, they had the Vicksburg campaign in the West, we had the march through the South, we had various battles, slowly, slowly marching south. And that strategy actually formed over time. The vision was to bring the South into the North, the strategy developed over time.
Mr. Dermer, I want to, I want to call back to kind of crystallize what I've heard from you so far. It sounds to me that you're identifying two problems with our foreign policy. One, the big one that you're highlighting now is that we have a lack of tactical or governmental building skills when it comes to on the ground, actually putting systems into practice. And you also had mentioned right before the break, that we are working in an area of the world that hasn't known democracy, and in your opinion, won't know democracy, or can't. And I was hoping maybe you could tell me, which of these two problem areas do you think pose the greatest threat to democracy in the Middle East, or in the areas that we're working in, specifically Iraq?
Tell you what, PJ, hang on, we're up against a break, so I want to give you plenty of time to jump into that. We also have all three lines open. We'll be right back after this quick timeout. Hey, we're back on Talk Back. Bob Siden Schwartz on the drums. John King over there.
Light on his feet for a big-
I do the same thing. I'm Peter Christian, joining us on the phone, Colonel PJ Dermer. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, so right before the break, Mr. Dermer, I kind of crystallized what I had thought were two of your main points. One, that specifically dealing with the Middle East, Iraq in specific, that there was, it was a part of the world that didn't know, or have a history with democracy, and probably wouldn't be able to get there. And then the other problem that it seems you identified is that we have these big dreams, but we're very bad at putting them into practice, at tactically getting stuff developed. And I was hoping you could kind of explain which one you thought was the bigger threat to development in the Middle East.
Um, I don't know, they go together. And, but there's a broad, let me bring you up to a higher point first. And the higher point that I make is, is that it's not that you do fail. Failure in of itself is not necessarily something to be afraid of, or something that you have to, we have to, you know, critique ourselves for the rest of millennia. Failing is okay. Failing is an option. But the problem is learning, and/or, and setting up the conditions for success. My takeaway, my strategic takeaway from the years of working these things forward, and being at the national level, I was in the office of the Vice President, and the national level, the Joint Staff, is that we predetermined before we even get started. And this is unacceptable. And this is unpalatable as an American.
Give an example of that, if you would, PJ. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but when you say, what you just did, give us an example of how we make this predetermination, and to your point, not being acceptable, and why it fails.
Sure, I'll give you, let's use Iraq as an example, and then I can do others as well. Look, we planned for years, in a sense, to take down Saddam Hussein, one way or another. We had plans on the shelves for years, military plans, on how to operationally knock out Saddam Hussein. Take down his army, take down his military, take out his weapons, whatever, whatever we were going to do in Iraq, we had plans for it for years. Well, along comes the idea that we're going to do more than just going to take down Saddam Hussein, we're going to try and influence outcomes both in Iraq and the Middle East. Outcome meaning the nature of governments, the nature of states. Okay, these are big thoughts. These are big ideas. These are strategic nature. And at various levels of the government, everyone agreed that Saddam had to go, or this was the big political push, that Saddam had to go in the 2002 timeframe. What was not quite in agreement, what was not quite clear, was exactly what happens afterwards. And as things moved along, and the operational planning to take out Saddam Hussein, then started to develop the idea of, well, after Saddam goes, we're going to change Iraq. And not only are we going to change the nature of Iraq, i.e. the governance, the basic political society there, if you will, we might as well use that as a litmus, or a catalyst to change the Middle East, the nature of politics, polities in the Middle East. Well, those are very big thoughts. And if you're just going to change the nature of society in Iraq, that's a strategic thought. If you're going to use Iraq as a springboard to change the policies of the Middle East, well, then that is grand strategy, and Iraq becomes an operational step, meaning, you know, a jumping board, a catalyst to the rest of the Middle East.
Yeah, with that, we're going to have to, we're going to have to stop you right there, because we're up against a hard break. I'm sorry, PJ. We have another hour to stretch out and talk about all this. So we invite you to stay with us and join us. This is fascinating. I'm learning a lot. I know you are, too. We're going to come right back after the top of the hour break, and have more with Colonel PJ Dermer. We'll be right back. Okay, the Montana World Affairs Council continues on the radio, of course, Bob Siden Schwartz, John King. I'm Peter Christian, joining us on the phone from just outside Washington DC, Colonel PJ Dermer.
Now, before we get too far, Mr. Dermer, I want to just go back into your biography a little bit. I was reading about you this morning, and it sounds like you helped to try to set up government in Iraq. Is that true? Can you tell us just a little bit about some of the lessons you learned from that process?
What fun was that?
Do I really have to?
I think it would be, I think the audience would enjoy hearing about what it was like. And also, I think it helps stabilize some of your opinions on the matter.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And if we get a chance, another great harbinger is always Middle East peace, but let's stick to Iraq first. Um, yeah, this is what led, my experience on the ground in Iraq really led me to drive the conclusions that I came to in the paper that I've written of late. And when we first got to Iraq, and let me back up just a little bit to make the point, the strategic point, is that the war planning for Iraq went on forever. You know, we call it USS Plan Forever, all right? The planning for the post-war, which is now documented in books, in many books, did not begin in earnest until almost a few months before the actual invasion. So you, at that point, we were almost predetermined for catastrophic failure, given the length of time that we even put into the most important piece, which was post-fighting, not the fighting. America, as you can see, or can assess, does very well at fighting. And we are starting to develop very unique methods, drone warfare and whatnot. So getting through to Baghdad, taking down Saddam, and knocking out the Iraqi army was not, never going to be a big issue. If they fought us, that's fine. If it took longer, that's fine. But the issue at hand was always what after? And that planning did not start in earnest until a few months before the invasion. So you have to ask yourself, why, number one, and there'll be more writing about this. But two, who will do this? Who's going to flood into the zone in Iraq to build these vaunted institutions, to lead Iraq to be the first democratic nation in the Middle East? That was never thought out, and it never is. It's not thought out today in Israel-Palestine, it's not thought out in what next, in Syria. So back to your question, a small group of us landed in Iraq at night, and everyone started looking for things to do. There wasn't a plan to follow. So Americans, and this is a plus now, a counter to my own argument, Americans don't sit around. No matter who they are, what age, culture, or creed, look for things to do. And as we sat down on the ground in Iraq, and we started to develop a way forward, yeah, the first focus from Washington was, how do we get a national leadership structure in place, i.e. a prime minister, a president? Well, that wasn't going very well, and it was very complicated, and we did not have the people on the ground that understood Iraq were the key players. At a lower level, it was decided, well, while we're waiting for the big national, the big national, you know, conclusion of who's who in the prime minister shop, it was decided that, you know, perhaps more importantly, we better get local structures going, i.e. city councils, local councils, municipal councils, county, whatever you want to call them, county seats. And I got asked to develop, to build the Baghdad City Council. Baghdad City Council was going to be the first example of local democratic institution building in Baghdad. And by default, it would be the first of its kind in the Middle East.
Wow.
So this is not small thinking, and it wasn't small on our shoulders as to what we're about to embark. The problem was, is how do you do it? I mean, who, who has done this? Who, where, what do you start? I mean, what are we talking about here? Iraqis have no idea what you're talking about. They had a council, but it's strictly a member, a part of the system of the, you know, the tyrannical system of Saddam through the Ba'ath Party. And it was pro forma, like all the councils are in the Middle East. They raised their hands, they vote, they go home. So we had a small group of us, which was a fascinating mixture of people, worth telling someday, sat down, and drew on white paper what the Baghdad City Council would look like. It wasn't easy, a lot of fighting, a lot of shouting. We didn't, we had to figure out, you know, numbers, and there was no census.
No, is it just you and other military guys in this group, or there-
No, I was the only military guy. There was a State Department official, a great American named Andy Morrison, and there was a retired professor, teacher, Iraq expat that came back into Iraq, Dr. Alma, and a civil affairs officer from the Army. And it's about four or five of us in there in a room that did this.
And how did you, how did you pick each other? I mean, who put that group together? Apparently, there was no plan for even making a group like this, right?
Oh, I remember, remember, the head of the administration in Iraq leaned over and asked someone in the room, does anyone know how to build city councils? Did we get a lesson?
I love it. This is precious.
Anybody got a dime, anybody got a dime to stop a revolution?
City council on aisle three?
Well, this is the nature of the issue at hand that I'm presenting. Yes, I'm funny, but for those of us sitting there on the ground, in 110 degree heat, in an open room, it was very serious. And at that time, I believed. I was an ardent believer in what we were doing. Today, I'm a little bit more cynical.
I'm sorry, PJ. Yeah, but what that sounds like to me is a scene right out of Lawrence of Arabia, if you remember?
Oh, yeah, I know very well.
It took the Turkish city, and the British said, okay, you're such a smart guy, you organize these people. And, yeah, it didn't work out there either. So we're going to take our first break of the hour. We'll be right back. Colonel PJ Dermer is with us. This is fascinating, and I'm telling you, we have a long, a long way to go yet. We'll be right back. Hey, we're back on Talk Back. 721-1290 is our number. And we're talking with Colonel PJ Dermer, retired from the US Army, and the amazing career that he has had in, you know, trying to put together effective systems, if you will, in the Middle East. And so we're kind of going through that right now. Go ahead, Bob.
PJ, please continue before the break, in terms of the insight and story that you were telling us. And then I have a couple of questions.
We got the big thought to, let's get a local group up. And the purpose of it was, one, you know, like, as I said, to get the local governance going, but also so the face of Iraq, Iraqis could see exactly what the intent of the United States mission in Iraq was. In other words, we had taken down Saddam, everything got quiet for a few days, then we had the looting, and then we had the, okay, so exactly what are you here for? You're saying it's not oil. Too bad, we should have made that clear, whether it was or wasn't. But Iraq as a whole was looking towards the center of Baghdad as to exactly what was going to happen next. And of course, at that time, yeah, it was all about building a new society, or new political part of their society. Let me be clear about that. And like I said, a couple of us, several nights, hot nights and days, knocked out the structure of the city council on white paper. But then it came to the real dilemma. And the dilemma was, wow, there's four of us, five of us, we have one vehicle, who's going to go out among the city of 5 million residents, 4 million residents, and start proliferating this, advertising this, and start setting up the first basic electoral councils, or the first basic elections? Meaning, so for Baghdad, we had 80-some neighborhoods, and we had nine districts that would merge into one council. So, you know, who's, who's going to get out there and do this if we're going to do this before 2020? And there was no answer. And then they slowly but surely, it worked around to, well, we're going to give it to Mikey. And this is my sarcasm, Mikey meaning military. Whenever we couldn't figure out anything, it would go to the military. And I saw this at the national planning level, and it still happens today. Whenever the civilian side, the national side gets stuck on something like, it almost defaults to the military, well, we'll just give it to Mikey. Oh, okay. So I saw this in the run-up to Iraq, and now I'm in Iraq, and I hear one of the State Department officials say this at the table, well, we'll just use the military. We'll task the military divisions in Baghdad to carry forth the venture of elections in the city. And I, I went high and right. I said, absolutely not. That's not what they're here for, it's not their job. We, you know, we put ourselves in this position of not having the right personnel to do the mission. We're not going to slap this on the military with everything else. I lost the fight, because it became the apparently only answer to go to. If you need labor, the labor was going to be the military. We went out to the divisions, to the brigade commanders, the battalion commanders, initially skeptical, but also very excited, because in their eyes, that's exactly what we were here for in Iraq, to do in Iraq and the big picture. The insurgency hadn't started in earnest yet, there was some fighting, there was some cleaning up of criminals. So the military actually rolled in in earnest, and thank God they did, because without the United States military, it wouldn't have happened. So as we rolled through the next few months of setting up neighborhoods and districts, and rolling into the actual city council, it was quite exciting. The military guys were actually excited to see this is exactly how it was supposed to work. And they backed us wholeheartedly, and they kept us out of danger. We had some interesting stories for another time that got, that got quite crazy. And then the day of the city council establishment in July, all the local news stations were there, in Al Jazeera, and Al-Abri, and these were coming up to us and asking us, you know, making fun of what we did, and this is not real power, and how do you think this will work? But the important thing was, is we had set up the Baghdad City Council prior to the national level effort getting off of its feet. So it was a big success in a way, in our eyes at the time, because we finally had something to show Iraq, that this is where we were headed throughout the country. And that others would copy what we did in Baghdad, and we would go forth and spring a new nation. Well, we now know the rest of the story. We now, we now know what happened. And of course, I was a big believer at the time, I'm not now, but I was very excited at the time. Lost a lot of weight, it was, took a lot of effort, it was all day, all night, for months. But clearly, we weren't ready, we didn't, none of us flew into Iraq thinking we would ever do something like that. And as, as the point of your question was, well, we now know that it didn't hold. And that's correct. I will tell you today, when I see some of these people that I worked with 10 years ago to set this up, those that are still alive, and there aren't many of them that are still alive, who are in country, I'm actually having the same conversations with them that I had with them the first time that I met them in some hotel or some firehouse in 2003. Meaning, they still don't get it. They still don't understand what we're trying to do.
You jumped really quick to the formation of the city council. Can you tell us, like, what it was like for people to get involved in a democratic process that had never been involved? I mean, did people just come out of the, were there lots of volunteers, lots of people running?
Yes, it was incredible. The very, one of the most fascinating things to watch was, we, once we figured out how to put an election together, and one thing we did, we did was, we didn't, in the pre-election series, which we, we made it very clear that this was not a formal legal, legal concept we were doing, that would come later. The formalization of exactly, you know, voting and systems in Iraq would come later. We were calling this a precursor, a show, not a showpiece, but a, an example, a fundamental example of how we would move forward legally, once everything got settled in Iraq, sort of like a primary. We considered this a primary to formal elections later. But what was most interesting is when someone would come up and volunteer to be, to run for the council, which they could never do before, you know, they would have disappeared. And we offered, would you like to announce it in public? Would you like to announce to your constituents, to your neighbors, that you would like to run for office? And this is something they'd never seen or done in their lives. And unanimously, other than the women, which is a different, whole different story, 99% came forward and said, yes, I want to stand up on a podium, or a truck, or a trash can, or a milk crate, and I want to announce to my, to my local peers and friends that I am running for, to be a trial representative member in a council. And it was quite fascinating to see. It was really quite interesting to see.
There's so many juxtapositions here. When you say that-
Without volunteer labor.
The enthusiasm, or the willingness to participate, but not having the understanding of what they were participating in.
That's correct.
So we've got to go to a break here. When we come back, I've got several questions to ask you. So thank you, and we'll be back here momentarily.
Okay. And we still have all three lines open, if you want to get into this conversation, because I'm sure, as all was happening in the, in the Middle East, in Iraq and Afghanistan, and all the fighting that went on, and underneath was this effort to try to help these societies coalesce into something that would be successful. So anyway, so we're going to come right back with more of Talk Back in a moment. Hey, we're back on Talk Back. 721-1290 is our number. I'm Peter Christian, of course, the Montana World Affairs Council on the radio, Bob Siden Schwartz, John King, joining us on the telephone, Colonel PJ Dermer, just outside Washington DC. And Colonel, we do like to get our callers in as quickly as we can, so let's do that right now. Mark, you are on with PJ Dermer. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, Colonel. I'm retired military, myself, NCO, and my last duty station was at West Point. So I know how they, politics and rewards go for, if you do a job well done, at your position. And I congratulate you on, you know, stepping up and saying, you know, you want to take this assignment to be on the committee to bring democracy to Iraq. But I feel sorry for you, because the plan that you all put together did not go through, so they kept you off the general list. And that pisses me off.
I have no regrets. That's all I can say. I have no regrets.
Can you, can you explain the military politics here, what he's talking about?
Yeah, I clearly understood what our caller was saying here.
So he's saying that, he's saying that because the city council wasn't successful, that you were stopped at going higher than Colonel, is that?
No, 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 no. No, no, that was way too long ago to even affect that. No, no, I, that was way too long ago to even affect that.
Okay, let's get, let's continue on and get Catherine on the line. Catherine, you are on with PJ Dermer. Go ahead.
Yeah, hi. Um, I wanted to, to ask, um, your guest, uh, just to set up my question, uh, Japan had total surrender, and, uh, MacArthur imposed, um, a new constitution, and basically restructured the, the society from the ground up, and we stayed there for a long time. Uh, another example is the British Empire in India. Uh, they did pretty much the same thing. Both of them took a long time to do, and a very imposing, long-term presence to establish, uh, a Western-style governance in both of those countries. Those seemed to be pretty successful. Uh, America, or the United States, has not really, uh, had, um, any successes in war, or in establishing democracies, um, I, I don't think, since, since those, since the time of Japan, World War II. Um, we are a nation that looks short-term rather than long-term these days, partially because we seem to, uh, flip our governance every forty-eight years. What do you think of that? Does that sound reasonable, or does that sound like, um, part of the problem?
Um, uh, no, I, I think that's part of a much larger study of understanding, um, why we have the, the trouble we do with what we're trying to do in the Middle East and elsewhere. Um, part of it is a political cycle of four years. It's hard to keep folks' attention on something grand and strategic for as long as they can. I think the impetus after World War II is much different than it is today. Um, Japan is its own great study, primarily, uh, because of what MacArthur did, and it's interesting, you have to understand that MacArthur had lived in Asia as a child, spent many years in Asia, so he understood Asia very well, which allowed him to do some of the things that he put forth in Japan. Um, no, it's, it's a great conglomeration of issues in the modern time of why we can't seem to get to where we want to go, uh, with those historical successes in mind.
Uh, MacArthur, obviously, a military leader. Um, do you think it was just a lack of having the right person in charge in Iraq?
Well, I, I, I can't, I would not put it to just that. I would, I would, it's a combination of things, which makes it so catastrophic. I mean, I don't know what the right leader would have been, other than someone like, like Saddam. Saddam-like, let's say, and I'm, I'm just posturing now. Meaning, the culture in Iraq, particularly in Iraq, Iraqis are very, very, very hard to deal with. They're very, very tough on themselves. Um, takes very strong leadership. Now, the question is, strong leadership in terms of how we define it, or strong leadership in terms of how the Middle East defines it? Um, that's only part of the equation.
Well, how did Saddam do it? He, he, he killed, he killed his own population, for crying out loud.
Yeah, but that Saddam knew the Middle East, and Saddam knew Iraq.
Right.
He knew his people.
Saddam acted very much in the way that Middle East leaders can act.
Right.
PJ, I wanna, I wanna ask you something here about, you made the comment that MacArthur grew up in Asia, he understood the culture, the people. We, we were talking off-air that when we went into Iraq, we had literally just a handful of people that could speak Arabic. We were not prepared to understand, or at least the majority did not understand, the distinctions and the conflicts historically, and the economics and tribalism of the Sunni and the Shia. We didn't understand the regional distinctions of Iraq. We think of it as one country, held together truly by Saddam, but really very different. Uh, so, what is it about that type of lack of understanding that we continue to repeat again and again? We spend so much money on the hardware, and it seems like we spend very little on the most important part of going into a conflict like this.
That's true, and we still haven't capitalized on the, on the human dimension. You know, in Iraq, we created something called the Human Terrain Teams, perhaps well-intended, I don't know, um, but it has not survived the sunset of Iraq and Afghanistan, only to a small degree, you know, to understand exactly, to, to try and come to grips with what was happening around us. You know, we had lots of, as you write, hardware, lots of military, lots of forces, lots of uniforms, and we built up the Iraqi military services and the Afghan services, very much in our own eyes, battalions, brigades, special forces, airplanes, artillery, you know. But quite fundamentally going on around us, and the previous caller mentioned the British, the British effort, and they had this trouble as well, decades ago. Quite fundamentally around us, we still are refusing to trade, to trade weapons and hardware and things that we're very comfortable with, with the less comfortable world of the human dimension, cultural dimension, whatever you want to call it, investing in language. We're still loathe to do that. Why, that's its own PhD paper, it's a discussion for another time. But clearly, when you're working in an environment that is foreign to you, and you cannot speak directly to the people, you've got to invest more in that direction. And my, I would also argue, in terms of cost and time, the more you understand, the more you can invest in that side of the equation, the less it will cost you in lives and on the other side.
Hang on a second, PJ, we've got a Facebook comment, and we need to take a break.
Yeah, this'll be quick. Uh, it's from Tim Gardapee. He says, welcome PJ, it's been a long time, nineteen eighty maybe? You have been grizzed. He was instrumental me, uh, to getting me into ROTC. I'm now a retired LTC. Mutual friend in Mark Roberts, I saw him on the front page of the Wall Street Journal in two thousand and three. A great man, and incredible hard job in Iraq. I was there too. Thanks for coming on the radio, and back to Missoula.
Okay.
All right. With, with that, we're gonna take a quick break. Uh, three lines open, seven two one twelve ninety. Stay with us, we're coming back. We're back on Talk Back, the Montana World Affairs Council on the radio. We are learning a lot from Colonel PJ Dermer, who's with us, uh, from, uh, just outside Washington DC. So, go ahead, who's, who's up?
Um, sure, I can ask a question. I, I'm really curious to hear, because we've talked a lot in the viewpoint of history. You've talked about how it didn't work out. But when did you know that the city council was going to fail?
Well, we didn't. It just, as we all turned our, it's not just the city council, we had other elections in other parts of the country. Don't forget, we had national elections in the governance, the provinces.
Yeah, I remember the purple fingers, I think we all probably remember seeing the TV coverage of that.
We weren't, we didn't have that at that time, unfortunately. We didn't have the ink. But, um, yes, no, I mean, some of the electoral process has worked out in Iraq, like, for instance, the governance level. Um, no, we didn't, we didn't know, because unfortunately, when you work in these kind of, um, these kind of events, you don't get to stick to an event for very long. For instance, soon as I got, I was finished with the city council, I had to move on to something else. And the, the lieutenants and the captains got very angry, because they asked us, well, what do we do with these councils? Now that you guys are moving on, you've done the electoral process, what do we do with them? And of course, we didn't have an answer. We weren't, we, we were not ready to give them, well, this is how you run a council on a daily basis, or what do people do for you? So it's not like it, we knew, you know, it would fail, or there was a consummate date when the city council didn't work. But as I said before, everything got subsumed by the fighting. All this stuff got subsumed by the fighting. Uh, council members started dying, council members started leaving, and the elements that were attacking us started attacking any representation of the new order that we were trying to impose, which is not out of historical sync with other efforts of this kind.
PJ, I want to, uh, ask you the question, as we've discussed up to this point, where, and what's the responsibility of the American public? Because we're really talking about governance. We elect our officials. So what would you say to us sitting here in Missoula and in Montana, that we need to take more effort and responsibility for as citizens? And does this flow down to our educational system, to help start to change the dynamic that you've been describing, uh, as our guest here today?
Well, a couple, two-fold question there, Bob. I would think, you know, I, I ask that question myself all the time, why does the American public allow or not hold anyone accountable for the, for the debacles that have occurred? Whether they're small or big. I mean, we just had the great Syrian adventure last year, with trying to, trying to train up a Syrian proxy force, that failed miserably. But those of us that have been doing this for many years could predict that it was gonna fail miserably before it even got started. So that failing is one thing, but the costs associated with it, that's in the public press, five hundred million dollars, I don't understand why that's not an issue to be taken at hand, um, within, within our own political system. We in Iraq can afford five hundred million dollars for a group of Syrian fighters than we can five hundred million dollars for something here in the US.
Okay, uh, PJ, I was gonna say, PJ, we, we have a caller, so let's jump to the phone. Uh, Eric, you are on with PJ Dermer. Please go ahead, sir.
Hi. Um, I'm gonna take, take everything that, uh, we were told by our government at face value, that we were in Iraq to bring freedom to the Iraqi people. Um, but anyway, as a preface, I'll say, George Bush said, no nation building, before he got elected. But anyway, uh, at face value, we're over there to try and, uh, instill freedom, or bring freedom to Iraqi people. And I believe that, uh, you can't have freedom unless you have Christian underpinnings. That means the Constitution, the unwritten Constitution of the people, has to be, have a moral foundation based in the redemption provided by Jesus Christ. And unless that's present, you can't go impose that on another country. The reason it works here is because that was the Constitution of the people of this country. And there's my comment. Thanks.
Okay, that's Eric. So your comment, PJ, please.
Okay. No, I mean, I don't have any, I don't have a reply to that. I would only say that in the big push to, to change some of the societies in the Middle East, or influence the societies, we use the word Constitution all the time, but in holding with the thesis of today's topic, Constitution is a little bit bigger, uh, a little bit bigger piece of the puzzle than most people understand. It's not about an inanimate object, it's about human objects at the end of the day.
So PJ, going back to our, uh, discussion before Eric called, I'm gonna say to the public that's listening, there's a storm coming in terms of the financial obligations and liabilities that we have. I don't know if it's one, three, five, ten years down the road. It will impact all facets of what we do and how we do things. Is it possible that it will take something like that to finally get us to start reassessing what it takes to operate and function on a global basis?
So we're gonna, we're gonna take that question right after we come back from the break, PJ. And again, three lines open, seven two one twelve ninety. Time is rapidly, uh, shrinking here. If you'd like to get into this conversation, we'd love to have you at seven two one twelve ninety. Talk Back rolling right along. Seven two one twelve ninety is the number, and our guest on the phone, Colonel PJ Dermer, is with us, uh, from just outside Washington DC. And, uh, of course, Bob Seidenschwartz. John had to leave us, uh, with some family stuff going on, so let's get to the phone and say good morning to Marilyn. Thank you for holding, Marilyn. You're on with PJ Dermer. Go ahead.
Hi, um, I was really glad to hear Eric call in, um, because the whole time this conversation has been going on, I've been thinking that exact same thing. There's a parable in the Bible about solid foundation. You gonna build it on rock, or you gonna build it on sand? And when our founders came here to form this nation, they had the Word of God, and that's what they believed in their heart and soul. And that's what they founded this country on. And I'm curious if anybody took the Bible to Iraq when they were wanting to form the government there? I know everybody today thinks that's so trite, and so, uh, such foolishness, but it's not. It works. And as our leadership gets away from that sure foundation, that, that rock, um, which is Jesus Christ and God, um, we're losing our country. And so, we can, people can poo-poo it, but we really need to take a look at that, and I'm curious, did anybody take a Bible there to set up the new government?
Okay, thanks, Marilyn. So PJ, uh, would you like to answer that?
No.
Okay, so let's move along to the next que, uh, this is, Ahmet, Ahmet, you're on Talk Back. Hi.
Oh, thanks for taking my call. Very interesting conversation. I really liked Eric's and Marilyn's comments. I agree, but I was one of the people who was against the Iraq war from the outset, from, um, obviously it's proved true. But I wonder, as long as we had forces there, if, um, one thing we could have done better is have some forces remain in Iraq to keep the peace, as it were. I was one of the first cheering when all the troops were pulled out of Iraq. I thought that the Iraqi army could take care of itself. I guess I was wrong, because then we got in ISIS. And I'm wondering, if we had, um, left, you know, a few thousand of our troops in Iraq to keep the peace, if we wouldn't even have ISIS? Because unfortunately, we won the battles, but we lost the war, and we did have kind of a stable government. I, I just, uh, would kind of like an answer, if, if, if anyone has a comment or anything, I just kind of, uh, wonder if that was part of the whole thing, too.
Okay, thanks, Ahmet. So PJ, what do you think? Should we have left?
Yeah, no, that's an off-discussed point. Um, it, um, having, leaving some troops in Iraq for a while might have helped, uh, some things, we can't argue as to exactly how that would have played in the ad, in the advent of the rise of ISIS or not. The rise of ISIS following the heels of al-Qaeda in Iraq is its own, has its own trajectory, irregardless of US troops on the ground.
You know, it sounded to me, when, what you were discussing, uh, earlier in the program, when you first began to, to organize and to, to get people interested in perhaps forming their own council, or governing, for people that have been, uh, under a dictator for so long, it seemed, it seemed like you ran into people who were, uh, yearning for at least the opportunity to, uh, to, to have some sort of self-determination. Uh, did you find that in widespread, or was that just among certain people?
No, we found it widespread, but I will tell you, my sense of it since, and this ties into the misnaming or the misreading of the Arab Spring that happened a few years ago, is we did not understand the reasons that they were coming forth. Most of us took it as what you just alluded to, some sense of self-determination. What it, what it really was in the Middle East, and it is in a lot of cultures that have never had the freedoms that we espouse so openly, is they were believing in us. They were believing and trusting us. And they were believing and trusting us as the new leadership in their lives. And there's a very big distinction there.
So we're filling that, you're filling that, filling that void that was left behind, right?
There are those that had a yearning to be free, quote unquote, and that's to be defined differently in the Middle East. But primarily is what I learned years later, is when several Iraqis came up to me, when we finished building another institution, and the day that we departed country, I found out that ten percent of the Iraqi force, or the Iraqis, the seniors that we brought on, all quit. They left the building. And I asked them, why? We spent months and months and months training you and bringing you on, sending you to the States, sending you back, giving you formal positions, and they, and the answer was, because you left. We believed in you. We didn't believe in what you were telling us.
Wow. So, so basically, it sounds like a society that is founded and based on having a strong leadership, uh, without teaching others to take that leadership.
In a large sense, yes. It's not a hundred percent, but in a very large sense, yes. That's a lot what tribalism is, that's a lot how the religious nature works over, over in the Middle East.
So, 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 so does that tell you, does that tell you that, in order for, uh, America, or some sort of coalition, to have any sort of success there, it's going to have to be something that's semi-permanent?
Could be. Very well could be. Could be.
Yes. So PJ, along the lines of what, when we look at the table right now, there's conflicts throughout the entire region. So, in the time that we have, what, what would be your message to administration, forget the current, but who will be the next president and that administration? What do they need to start thinking about? And are they getting the type of discussion that you're bringing to us here today?
My sense, the latter question first, my sense is absolutely not. Or if that discussion is taking place, it's not allowed to enter the mainstream. And I can tell you that formally from doing the, the businesses that I'm involved in now.
All right, and I need to ask you, why and whom is not allowing this to enter the mainstream? For what purpose?
It's a cultural problem on our own side, I think, in short. We, we just loathe that, once we have our minds set up on something, whether it be for political reasons or personal reasons, uh, even as parents sometimes, right? We loathe to hear alternatives that go against the grain of what we're thinking, or that won't fit in the timeframe we're thinking. One of the callers noted our four-year cycles of the presidential elections. Uh, the second part, I would argue, is it's, you have got to enlist, you have got to foster those that understand the business at hand. I absolutely see no reason why there should be a difference in a board-certified surgeon only being allowed to do what a board-certified surgeon does. License, practice, paid certificate, and the fact that the national security level, anyone, it's a come-one, come-all system. I just refuse to understand this as an American, and someone that's been in-
And with, and with that, we need to take our final break. It's just a sixty-second timeout, and then we have a chance to wrap things up. Uh, seven two one twelve ninety, you have eight minutes left in the program. If you'd like to make a comment or ask a question, we'd love to hear from you. Stay with us. Hey, thanks for joining us on Talk Back. It's been a fascinating discussion so far, and, uh, of course, we have Colonel PJ Dermer on the phone with us. Uh, and Catherine is back for another question. Catherine, please go ahead.
Just a quick one. I wanted to ask your, your, uh, your guest, given the givens of what's going on in the Middle East right now, what would you like to see, um, happen? What, what would you like to see the military or the United States actually do in a hypothetical, uh, situation? Do you think that we have any, um, actions that we can take to make things better, especially with, uh, the rise of ISIS? Or do you think we should, uh, go into a hands-off situation?
I think, no, I, I think that's the wrong question. I think, no, I, I think that's the wrong question. I think we are overly matched with what we want the US military, overly focused on what we want the US military to do, and we're not focused on the other elements of national power. Where is the, where is the political side that, you know, of the equation in all this is the real, is the real question? The battle against ISIS is not in Western Anbar or Eastern Syria, it's in the capital of Damascus and the capital of Baghdad.
So, do you think that we have anything that we can do for that?
Uh, yeah, it's a long, drawn-out, uh, political process that we're not very well at doing.
Oh, another-
It's not on the military shoulders. This is not a military fight.
Yeah, Catherine, this goes back to really the premise of the show right from the beginning, which is, we're very good at blowing up and breaking things. We are not very good at the follow-through, and from what I've been hearing for the last hour and a half, that is what PJ has really been trying to educate us about. Is that correct, PJ?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's, we've had that for a long, long time, since Thomas Jefferson, you know? So, okay, thank you.
Thanks so much. All right.
True.
PJ, in the little time that we have left here, you wrote in your paper something regarding the educational system, and from your perspective, where this education needs to start. Would you please give us some insight to that part?
Sure. I, I, I look back, I'm not a fan of academics, academia forward. I'm not a fan of the large, um, um, file, or excuse me, focus on academia as an answer to the problems that ail us in the world forward. What we need are operators. You need someone of the skill of a general contractor, of a builder, to actually put everything together forward to help work through these conflicts. And there's some great historical studies of those who have built nations and have made great things happen at the operational level. Ben Gurion, Medenich, Ataturk, Kerbaldi, and of the lot. What I am a fan of is, though, is that a baseline for understanding and change can start with academia. But in order for that to happen, academia has to enlist, and, and much less in pure academics in the research field, and more of the practitioner field. And the term I use in the paper is combined arms. It's a term taken for the military, whereas the military does not count on any one arm of its service to carry the battle to victory, to carry the day to victory. What the military teaches, and it's very sound, is that it's a combination of all the talents, of all the specialties, and all the arms in order to forge success. And I think academia has to adopt the term combined arms, uh, more like on the technical business side, uh, towards the social services. The social services get very selfishly focused on publishing, and writing, and books, and blogging, and research papers. And a research paper and an academic treatise is not going to carry you forward, once you get off the plane, once you get to the ground. You have to adopt a much more practical sense of what it all means, uh, in academia before you go forward.
All right. So, from a practical standpoint, can you take academia, and are they, and would they be open to the hypothesis that you've just presented here? Because it would seem to me that there's going to be an issue, if you're talking about military thinking, learning, and execution, and somehow at least cooperating and melding that into the academia that you just described.
Yeah, there has to be a blending.
Right. It's not so much military thinking, it's the concept of combining all of your talents into one pool, which is exactly what a general contractor has to do. A general contractor must deal with the architect, he must deal with the owner and their, and their vision, and then he must also deal with the subs. The guy doesn't show up on time, brings the wrong material, can't lay a brick line straight, digs the ditch wrong. Same stuff, that there must be some central operational focus, and of, of exactly who brings all the pieces together. It can't be a standalone piece. Academia in of itself won't carry the day.
Can you give us any examples where that may be happening right now, what you just described?
Well, I would argue that I would hope that, I would hope, like, when I was in the National War College at the National Defense University, that could be a great practical institution for what, what ails us. And it, in my experience, it didn't turn out to be. As a matter of fact, they called us the angry class. We were the first group of officers from the battlefields of Iraq and Afghanistan to merge back at the NDU, and in such, in a large number since Vietnam. And we were excited to see what was happening in the field of academia, to try and help us explain what had happened forward. We had thought that the academic system was welcoming us from our thoughts and what happened forward back into their system, and that was not the case.
So, what, what was the cultural clash that seems to me pretty embedded that you ran up against?
That's a good question. Academia has its way of working, just like politics and any other system. And if we didn't fit into the way they worked, then they weren't interested. Whereas, we thought they'd be extremely interested, given our experiences. And it doesn't quite happen that way. They have their own agenda.
We have exactly one minute before we're done, PJ. So, if, if there are places people can go to read more of what you've done, I know you, you said you're going to be working on a book. Where can people read your paper in its entirety?
Um, I don't have that online. I, I-
Okay.
Um, uh, it's a good question.
Okay.
It's a good question.
All right. Well, well-
I'll have to think about putting that online.
All right. Well, do us-
But I have other, I have other, our published articles online.
Okay.